This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Agles is absent today. Councilman Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed is also absent today. We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you so much for life. We thank you for your blessings on our great city. We just pray, God, that you will just provide wisdom and knowledge to the council today. Thank you for the mayor and his administration. We just pray for our state leaders, our national leaders. And, God, we just pray that as we move forward as a city, that, God, we'll be that city on the hill that cannot be here. We thank you for your Son, Jesus, for what he did for us. And that's why we stand here today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on October 6th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 2nd through the 8th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
All right, we'll just, we'll come back to you. We'll come back to you. Unfinished business. Item number 8A is the ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gadsden. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It adds managed care of feral cats and removes the seven-day holding period of dogs and cats not appearing to be owned. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I would ask if we table this for 14 days so this will come before the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
Okay, and is there any additional discussion as it relates to that? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the ordinance for a period of 14 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 14 days.
Okay. Proclamations?
Whereas in 1921, a group of civic-minded business leaders established an international service organization in Macon, Georgia. The founding members combined their diverse talents in friendship and service to improve the quality of life in communities throughout the world. Pilot International is comprised of almost 400 clubs and over 8,000 members worldwide. Pilot International is committed to service in areas of youth development, leadership, brain safety, fitness, caring for families in times of need. Members of Pilot International strive to further the organization's humanitarian efforts through grants and scholarships to support research, education, community, and caregiving programs. Pilot International partners with Safe Kids Worldwide, Care International, Project Lifesaver, and other respected service organizations to promote awareness for injury prevention and care for those in need. Pilot International fosters volunteerism in more than 8,000 young people worldwide through their sponsor of anchor clubs. The pilot clubs throughout the world are dedicated to meeting the needs of their communities through volunteerism. Therefore, it is fitting that the achievements and contributions of this worthwhile organization, its clubs and members be recognized on their anniversary by proclaiming October 18, 2015, as Pilot International and Pilot International Founder's Fun Day in the City of Gadsden, Alabama.
As the membership chairperson for 2015-16, we want the City of Gadsden, Etowah County, and beyond to know that we are one of the jewels of Etowah County and Gadsden. We partner with the Sheriff's Department in the tracking bracelets for children with delays and also persons with dementia or Alzheimer's. If they become lost, then they are able to be found in a timely manner. So we thank you for your support. And now, Iva, President-elect, Sherri McGinnis will say a few words.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, for recognizing the Pilot Club of Gadsden. We just find it a blessing to serve the community of Etowah County. We're happy to have with us today our member Joyce Smith and our anchor advisor, Ms. Sammy Hill, who is teaching the anchor club at Hoaks Bluff High School, leadership and citizenship. And we are just blessed to be a part of this organization. Thank you very much for recognizing us.
The nuisances on property located at 151 Brookwood Drive have been abated by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed. The nuisances on property located at 910 Wilson Avenue have been abated as well by the owner, therefore no action by the council is needed. Item number 8D is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1506 Central Avenue in District 6, Robert Stephen Jones being the last known owner. This resolution was tabled for seven days on October 6th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The property located at 1417 Eastview Avenue has a new owner, therefore no action by the council is needed at this time. This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 806 Avenue B in District 3, John Alexander Senior and City Financial Corporation, LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in May of 2012. There have been no improvements for the property. There was a permit taken out in August of 2012 with no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property at 1348 Forest Avenue in District 3, Ann Harris and Robert Conville II being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, state your name and address.
My name is John Morgan. I'm an attorney here in Gadsden. Honorable councilmembers, I'm here today on behalf of Ann Harris, who is the property owner. She actually purchased the property from Mr. Conville. Ms. Harris has several pieces of property in that area which she is in the process of bringing up to code. One of the pieces is just across the street. She's made substantial progress on that property. This property, I know the nuisance abatement process was started in 2011. Ms. Harris has suffered some health problems and had materials ready to start the renovation process that were stolen. The property is in bad shape and needs to be improved. And Ms. Harris is ready, able, and willing to make those improvements. She has a contractor to put on a new roof and also to do siding. And she's indicated that if she's given 60 days, that she can have the outside of the house fixed so that it's no longer ugly and an eyesore to the city. And that the house will remain income-producing piece of property for her. It's a rental that she owns. And also remain on the tax roll, providing revenue for the city. She'd need additional time from that, once she got the outside done, to bring the electric and the heat and the water and all that up to code. But the outside part of it, she can have, she says she can have finished in 60 days. And just ask the chamber's indulgence to give her the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of 2011. There have been no improvements. There are no building permits as of today.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1348 Forest Avenue in District 3, Ann Harris and Ro, oh, I'm sorry, that's the same one. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 515 Milton Street in District 3, Angela Swain and the State of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house. We started our process in April 2014. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1121 Jupiter Street in District 5, TLR Alabama LLC and the State of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in June of 2014. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 808 Oak Street in District 5, A&amp;D Properties LLC being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started the process in April 2012. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 15 Marston Avenue in District 6, F&amp;A &amp; P LLC, and Mary A. Nance being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this process in July of 2014. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Items number 16 through 19 are public hearings assessing, these are actually resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have five locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 511 Allen Street in District 1, $4,056.88. 519 Allen Street in District 1, $3,705.92. 1312 Robinson Avenue in District 2, $2,956.88. 416 North 24th Street in District 6, $2,640.88. And 2809 Lookout Avenue in District 7, $2,472.88. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Come forward, sir. Okay. Ma'am? You can come on up, ma'am. Sir, please state your name and address, please.
Jimmy Boswell. This is about 511 Allen Street.
519 Allen Street?
511.
That first one.
511, oh, the first one, okay.
I know you tore the house down. Okay, that's okay. But I don't understand why you tore my father's chain link fence down and took the posters down and everything. Who gave y'all permission to do that? And I don't have the money to pay you all. I can make payments, but I don't have to pay, you know, me and my mom is on fixed income. But I want to understand, I want to find out why you took the chain and fence. There wasn't nothing wrong with it. Really, the house shouldn't have been tore down because it was on the inside of a fence. And it wasn't a nuisance, okay? It might have looked bad in the neighborhood, but it shouldn't have been tore down. It said a brand-new fence around, the same kind of fence is around my father's house on Spring Rock Street. And I think it was cold and inconsiderate.
Ma'am, if you would, please, just come over to the podium.
My name is Lucy Taylor. I'm here on behalf of the property that they tore down on 416 North 15th Street in Alabama City, Winfield Street. I never did get a letter from them that it was going to be abated from the City of Gadsden. I didn't know it was in that condition because my health went down. And I had Kenny Widener taking care of the grass over there, keeping it cut. And he let some guy come in there and strip the wiring out. I was having, I had it painted. I had a door put up. They took the doors off. I had a door put up, a commercial lock put on the back. I was fixing to get the, I spent over $1,000 on it, and they still went and tore it down. They took my fence, which had a drive-in, that they could have got in there without taking my fence down, that I paid $800 for. And I could have used it at my house, some of it. And I, I don't know, I mean, why that they went over and, when I was trying to have it fixed up, because the guy, he was trying to find me some slate to go up there, then I was going to have it rewired. I was going to put it in shape, but no, the city couldn't wait till they tore it down. I don't know why that they wanted to get rid of it so bad. Because that was my life savings, working at the Holy Name of Jesus Hospital on $1.25 an hour that I spent over at that house. And it's all gone now, except the property. And now, I sent a check by my nephew yesterday to come down here to pay him. They give me 36 months to pay $70 something, it's a $100 check. He didn't come by here and give it to him. He went to Birmingham today, and I called him. He's going to come by here if anybody will take the check today and give it to him because...
We, I'll take the check if they bring the money up today.
What was the check? It was dated, it's for the City of Gadsden.
Was it for the demolition cost?
Yes, uh-huh. And because, see, I don't drive. I had two eye surgeries. I had a toe hip surgery, and I, my health has been going down. And I couldn't go over and say about that property, you know, like, but till I was told what shape it was in. And I said, well, we'll pay to get, I paid to get it fixed up. And I paid $400 for the paint over at Lowe's. I paid $600 to get it painted. I paid $150 for the door and the lock. And the guy had went up there and put some tarp and stuff, $200 on the roof till he could get it repaired. And I was out all that money because it's all gone now, my fencing and everything from the City of Gadsden. I want to thank you for that help I was getting.
She has to, she signed a paper, she has to 15th to pay them.
And see, it's hard, it's hard to get anybody doing anything for you. I have no sisters, brothers. This niece has to come 30 miles from another county up there to help me. My nephew, he lives in Hoaks Bluff, and he has to come and help me. That's the only two I got here to depend on. And if they can't, I have to depend on the city dart to take me a lot of places here to the doctors and things, you know, because I don't drive. I had two implants in my eyes, and like I said, that toe hip surgery.
He's supposed to be bringing the check. If he does, then give it.
Mr. Harbison's department deals with that.
Why didn't you have to get tonight or a thing?
Well, Ms. Taylor, we'll be glad to work with you any way we can on this bill. If you, if you just want to mail the check to, you can just mail it, Mr. Harbison will give you the address, you can just mail it once to my...
That'd be better because depending on them, I mean, I can, it's hard.
Yes, ma'am. I was, I was thinking you came to the hearing we had, and y'all...
I was late, I was late bringing it to the hearing, and it's done over with.
Yes, ma'am.
She had to come 30 miles from Lake Clear Creek.
Yes, ma'am. I remember when you came in late that day, and you said something about you was going to try to sell that property to somebody.
Well, I put it in her name, but then she was going to...
My daughter was going to move into it.
She was going to fix it up. I was going to fix it up, she was going to move in there. That $1,000 is gone, and my fence is gone, everything is, it's all going to be repaired.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic...
We did not take action on my days.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all five.
Thank you, Iva. Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Ma'umar Yahya Al-Gadari, doing business as My Store, has applied for an off-premises-only retail beer and table wine license at 1,000 Tuscaloosa Avenue. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? If you would, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Gerald Maxwell. I own a celebration station down the street from the young man who's applying for the beer license, and I practice law in the city as well. We call him Sam because his name is a little complicated. His English is not that good. We secured most of the steps, I believe. This is the final step in the process of getting the beer license. We've gone to the ABC Board. We've got the business license here. We've done all the... We've done all the background investigations and so forth. So we're just asking for an approval for him to, to just get a speed license. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion on this resolution? Is there any discussion?
For one, I'd like to ask, you know, is there anything being done to help the situation that got the place closed in the first place?
Not really sure about that. I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with, I don't see them, or at least the previous one. Yeah, about three months, so I'm not really familiar with the situation.
Well, drugs are still being sold down there, so I, I don't see any changes being done.
Well, the young man here, he's on the list of maybe two, three months. A lot of these guys will come from other neighborhoods. They migrate all over the city. They'll come to places like I rock. So I do, I just call the police and put on their, they have a program called either victim duty or victim control. They come to do their blues, they're coming to arrest somebody. It's just a presence that's up to my situation. But his being on the corner, which is pretty busy down there, we don't think he can use it, call the police. He runs them off each time. He's come, and I believe now over the last month, hasn't been a lot of traffic on the feds. But these guys hang out across the street, down the street a little bit, next to the Mason's Building, across from the Cox Building. Basically, they're young guys, a lot of them are teenagers. I talked to a lot of them. I know their moms and dads and grandparents. It's just a bad situation where you could probably use the police, you know, need their presence a little more.
Has he called the police on them since he's been there?
Yes, he has been. And the police have been, they've been there and they're doing real well. It's a good thing. I know. I always do build on the same problem. The problem that you have is that if you see the, the, the front of the building, I have no problem with it. The problem is he's on, on the business. This situation, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. Which kind of has nothing to do with, with the young man here, kind of hooking in our necks a little perspective of, I see no reason for him not to, at least try to do our necks.
Thank you.
It has nothing to do with the business that the police, it has nothing to do with it.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask for a motion that we consider this resolution for a vote, then I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
No.
Williams?
No.
Worthy?
No.
Billingsley?
No.
Cannon?
I'm staying.
All righty, the motion fails to carry for adoption.
Item number 22 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for reconstruction of South 11th Street from Black Creek Parkway to the bridge at Black Creek. The total estimated cost is $467,500, with the city being responsible for 20%, which is $93,500. This is a Gadsden-Etowah Metropolitan Planning Organization project for the year 2017. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is, this is, eventually we're going to get a bridge down there on South 11th Street. If the State of Alabama ever finally comes through with it and do it, that's what we are dependent upon and waiting on right now. We have, the city has made all its preparations and everything, but we are just waiting on the state to do their part and get started on it.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 23 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alda. This is a preliminary engineering agreement with Alda for resurfacing and traffic striping on South 11th Street from Randall Street to Forest Avenue. The total estimated cost is $89,890, with the city being responsible for 20%, which is $17,978. This is another MPO project for the year 2017. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is another project in my district and we're just waiting on them to get started on this project.
Okay, there are, there are four more of these folks and, and I'll, and just for the sake of time, I'll, I'll read them in their entirety, but these are all MPO projects. They are part of the long, long range plan for the Alabama Department of Transportation. The city's portion in each of these is 20% and they're all targeted for the South 11th Street area. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 24 is also a resolution authorizing agreement with Alda. This is the construction agreement for resurfacing and traffic striping on South 11th from Randall Street to Forest Avenue. Total estimated cost is $519,145.21, with the city being responsible for 20%. That amount is $103,829.4. Again, this is an MPO project for the year 2018. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is another project that we're waiting on Alabama, the State of Alabama, to get started.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 25 is also a resolution authorizing agreement with Alda. This is a preliminary engineering agreement with Alda for partial realignment and resurfacing of South 11th Street from the bridge over Black Creek to Randall Street. The total estimated cost is $83,454.38, with the city being responsible for 20%. That amount being $16,690.88. This is an MPO project for the year 2020. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 26 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alda. This is the construction agreement with Alda for partial realignment and resurfacing of South 11th Street from the bridge over Black Creek to Randall Street. Total estimated cost is $477,637.24, with the city being responsible for 20%. That amount being $95,527.45. This is another MPO project for the year 2020. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 27 is an ordinance available for first reading. It's amending the fiscal year 2016 general fund budget. This is to reflect receipt of an Alabama Department of Environmental Management, or ADIM, grant for the recycling center. And the amount is $104,692,000. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week. New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. Resolution requested by the Engineer Department authorizing an agreement with Bridge Builders of Alabama LLC for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge replacement. As for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is finally, we'll get to replace the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge. We've been voting on this for a while, so hopefully the engineer said they'll get started on it around the first of the year.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Okay, department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the mayor and council? The mayor?
No.
I'll, I just have a couple, a couple of announcements. The Marine Corps Reserve, who I think on an annual basis is responsible for the Torres for Tots Drive, is accepting 2015 applications for, for gifts. They're accepting, the application dates are October 12th through the 15th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. October 16th, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And October 20th through the 22nd, 9:00 a.m. to noon, at the Catholic Center of Concern at 612 Chestnut Street in Gadsden. In order to submit application, the following items are required. Children must be living in, in the house. The photo ID of a parent or guardian is required. Social Security cards for all in the home are necessary. Birth certificates for children, proof of income, and then a current bill with the correct address. You're not eligible if you have signed up at another agency. And applications will be taken on a first come, first served basis until a quota is reached. So please, please heed that announcement. We'll actually read this again on next week. The last thing I have is just very quickly, we have some birthdays to note. October's a busy month, which means that a lot of people were busy around New Year's. So my, my birthday was on last week, the 6th. Councilwoman Toles, Dr. Toles, his birthday is today. So happy birthday, Dr. Toles. All right? And, and of course, my mother, who is here today, her birthday is tomorrow. I, I can tell you that me saying that today will not suffice. I will have to be the first one to tell her on tomorrow. But I am, I always want to, I always like to point this out. My mother, every year on my birthday, my mother is the very first person to call me every year. So I don't know if I've ever told her or not, but that means a lot, just to know that you can count on your mother being the first one. I remember one year she called me at midnight. I didn't, I didn't get that call until later, but, but I did appreciate the fact that she was thinking about me at midnight, so we appreciate that. But yes, tomorrow is her birthday. Is there anything else?
Is Dr. Toles going to tell us how old she is?
It was in the paper.
Oh, okay.
I'm satisfied.
All right, if there's no other business, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.